Okay, the time is 6:00 PM. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Walter.
Here.
Vice Mayor Walbridge.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Gleene.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
Thank you. We'll begin with a moment of silence followed by a pledge of allegiance. ...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We will begin with a call to the public. The call to the public for a public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss nor take action on any matter during open call to the public unless those matters are properly noticed for legal discussion and legal action at that time. I do have one call to the public. I'd like to call up Ms. Kristin Gormondo. How are you this evening?
Great, thank you.
I understand you're with the Florence Toastmasters.
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. My face may look a little familiar to you. I hope it does, but if my face or name doesn't, at least you should know about Florence Toastmasters. It was almost 12 years ago that Florence Toastmasters was chartered in this room on June 1st, 2006. The membership of Florence Toastmasters started out with mostly people from the town. Department managers, department heads, other employees in those departments. My husband and I had the opportunity to also join Florence Toastmasters at the same time and help get it chartered. The reason we joined is that we wanted to mentor the club. We wanted to help it grow, help it get started, and then help it grow. We want the town to once again consider having its departments, the employees in those departments, and even members of the Florence community consider once again being members of Florence Toastmasters. What's Toastmasters, you ask? Toastmasters is a worldwide organization that is there for the purpose of helping people improve their communication and leadership skills, and in the process, they gain self-confidence. If you only knew, only were able to witness how people have grown with Toastmasters. Toastmasters is the number-one networking organization in Arizona. I know of people who have gotten positions in a job because of Toastmasters. They may not have been the most qualified, but they could represent themselves the best in the interview. People have been promoted in their position because of their Toastmasters skills, because they improved their self-confidence. That's why I'm here today. I really do want to encourage the township to consider sending department heads, department managers, employees of those departments, once again to join, to take a look at Toastmasters. It meets every Friday at noon at the Green Tree Inn and Suites. It meets every week because we know that life happens. You can't come every week, but rather than once a month, and you couldn't come that month, there'd be months in between instead of just a week or two. Green Tree Inn, Fridays, noon, for one hour. I'm inviting you on behalf of the current members of Florence Toastmasters to come and visit us once again. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that invitation. I do have one question, and I'll follow up with you afterwards. I was going to ask you if there is an annual dues that you could give that information to Mr. Billingsley or any other information of, you know, just the meeting dates and times, again, even though it was communicated here, and he could disseminate that amongst staff. Thank you so much, and I know Marco printed in the paper as well. Okay, are there any other members of the public that would like to speak at this time? Okay, closing call to the public. Item 6A is our presentation. Our first presentation is a presentation celebrating Ms. Laura Carter for her 20 years of dedicated service with the town of Florence. Mr. Brian Hughes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm excited to be here tonight to recognize Laura Carter for her 20 years of service to the town of Florence. I don't think it's a stretch to say that Laura is synonymous with the Dorothy Nolan Senior Center. After 20 years, she still has passion for helping seniors as well as the entire Florence community. Her dedication and professionalism are a large part of what makes the Senior Center a success. It's impossible to measure the number of lives that Laura has touched over the years, but I'm sure she's made a difference in each and every one of them. So I just want to congratulate Laura for 20 years, and here's your service award.
Laura, we appreciate everything you do in the community. 20 years. I don't think you're old enough to have served 20 years. Everything that you've done for the community, I know that there's many people in the community that talk about how, you know, you even check on them on your days off, and you really care about everybody. So thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you. I was so nervous walking down with that. I want you to say a few words.
Thank you all for this. It's very, very nice. 20 years flew by. I do plan to retire in September, go on and watch grandkids and stuff like that. But thank you for your continued support of the Senior Center. You've been awesome. They appreciate it, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Laura, so much. Okay, now our next presentation is Item B, a presentation by Alkemi LLC and Biogas Project.
Madam Mayor, members of council, at last week's, two weeks ago, regular agenda, council approved an item allowing staff to begin negotiations with a company by the name of Alkemi for potentially a future development agreement to build a biogas facility here in the town of Florence. One of the things I mentioned at that meeting is that since they were unable to attend the last meeting, we'd make sure that we had them on the presentation section, the regular agenda. Here with Alkemi is Vin Chung, as well as his team. I'll let him introduce his team, and they will provide a presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, everyone, for allowing us the opportunity to share about this project. And first I want to introduce our CEO, CFO, sorry.
Yeah, I just got promoted. I'm Roger Samar, CFO.
And this is Vin, CEO.
Mitchell Saquera, Chief Operations Officer. Thank you.
So I would like to first start with this quote from Buckminster Fuller on his view of pollution. He's viewed by many as a visionary architect, inventor, and educator, but he's well-known for the buckyball, which is the 60-carbon molecule that was invented under his geodesic design. We at Alkemi embodies his philosophy of doing more with less, and the renewable energy space, we focus on biogas. And so this next slide shows the biogas activity on a global scale. There's a lot of information here, but I'll summarize the main points. Biogas' production's been around, the technology's been around for a long time, and over the last 30 years, this technology's been refined and the efficiency improved so that the cost has dropped. Over in the UK, there's a lot more activities because of the cost of resources and cost of waste disposal. Biogas production plants allows for the option of diverting some of the waste and making a commodity that can be used to offset utility costs as well as generate revenue in a scenario where there's excess. And this slide here shows another option where energy crop can be utilized to produce power in addition to a waste stream. But for the most part, across different countries, you'll see that a lot of the feedstock comes from landfills and wastewater treatment plants. So why biogas versus solar or wind? Because they're all renewable. Well, biogas gives another degree of freedom in regards to the design of the installation. Because we're producing a gas, gas can be transported to the area of use. So rather than just generating electricity, you have that option. The nice thing about a biogas plant is that you can throttle the production of biogas to meet demand by varying your heat stock input. And this is a big advantage over solar and wind where you don't have control over the If you are able to use biogas directly, such as, you know, providing fuel for your fleet or generating heat, there's a cost benefit. But we have the option of generating both heat and electricity through a co-gen process that have improved inefficiencies. So for our specific case, we're looking at adding the capability to the south plant in regards to diverting some of the sludge into our digester that's also hosted on the site. The digester design is a closed tank design to facilitate the reaction for biogas production. What that means is that you're not going to have the same odor issue as an open tank that's currently being utilized. So in addition to the sludge, there's opportunities to divert the town's farm waste or solid waste center, the biomass waste that's coming from, let's say, the prison, the food waste from the prison. And so, once the gas is generated, it can be routed to ideally end users, businesses in the town, in which case they can utilize it to generate their own electricity. But if we have, we also intend to produce electricity to offset the cost of the wastewater treatment plant. The byproduct of this process can be repurposed for fertilizer that can go back to the farmers in our community. The CO2 as well can be utilized for other industrial applications. Alkemi in particular, we're a little unique versus our other counterparts in that we have an energy crop that we can offer to supplement the feedstock of our biodigesters. We've been working with our partner down in Mexico, and where Nopal, the crop, is utilized extensively. Nopal is a prickly pear cactus, and in Mexico, it's used as a food product, agricultural product, but also they produce biogas from this plant. The group that we're working with has perfected the growing of this crop in that they've increased the yield of the plant for a given hectare. This plant is unique in that it doesn't require a lot of water and the same infrastructure that other crops need for growth. If you look at the picture, you can see these are just drip lines feeding these plants. On top here in the lower, upper-left corner, this is a dead husk that was sitting on a table, and it served as a talking piece because it grew new loaves just from the moisture in the air. But in general, these plants can grow in hot climates similar to ours, but they can be planted around the world in hot climates. So from the start where we plant, we can start harvesting within three to four months. The benefit of having an energy crop is that it's going to pull O2 from the air, so there's opportunities for carbon credit generation there. Each hectare of land can produce 40,000 of these plants, and a 10-hectare plot, which is 24, or 25 acre, can yield up to 30,000 megawatt-hours annually. So we would size it appropriately for our needs. The other opportunity is that it'll create jobs. You don't need a lot of fancy farm equipment to farm Nopal. How it's done in Mexico is more manual. So how we see, this is one scenario that can play out. There are properties around the wastewater treatment plant that can be utilized for growing Nopal, and we would divert the town's waste streams to produce energy for the town use. And there's still a lot to determine on how to structure this, but there's a lot of levers that we can pull to make this economical, viable project. So going back to the title, path for sustainability, the only way that it can be sustained is if we're bringing value to all the constituents involved, and we believe that this project will allow that. It's just the start of the discussion process. We need to have the conversations to define a lot of the parameters that goes into our business model, but we have partners that we've already talked to in regards to investors and design-build partners. So if it pencils out, this can move pretty quickly. The other aspect of establishing this project here is that we're not just focused on energy production. We have a path in regards to water conservation. Utilizing Nopal, there's an opportunity to generate hydrogen rather than biogas, and with hydrogen, as you know, that's the holy grail, we're byproduct of hydrogen when you pair it up with fuel cells, is water, clean water. So that's part of our development path. And any knowledge that we can build or sustain, we have the desire to promote training here as well as education. There's several other projects that we are collaborating on in regards to the STEM program where we can lend what we're doing here for those programs. So that concludes this presentation, and we're open for questions.
Okay, I know that you'll have questions. Is there any council member that would like to begin? Okay, I have some questions. Are you affiliated at all, or have you done business before with, and I might be pronouncing this incorrectly, it's Nopalimex, N-O-P-A-L-I-M-E-X?
No.
Okay. And the only reason I asked is just because I started just doing some research, and I wanted to ask, because they were the first in the world to produce the biogas from the cacti in Mexico, and there was an article about them that came out in March of 2017. So I was reading about that and how they can foresee into the future using that Nopal methane to run vehicles as well.
Sure, yep. So the biogas that gets produced can be refined to 95%. Biogas consists of methane, but also CO2, and so if you refine it, then you can utilize it for fueling fleets. But the point that you're making is that the technology that we're working with exists, there's not, there's no research development for this aspect of the biogas production. And we are leveraging knowledge that's been built and applying it here in Florence. So there's a great deal of confidence that, you know, there's an opportunity to generate wealth for the city, but also for our investors. And the biggest hurdle for a lot of these projects is trying to bring in an investor, and I think we have an opportunity here that can move forward with what we have so far.
Okay, and then the other, were you calling him up right now?
Oh, no. I was just.
And the other question I had did revolve, and you touched upon it a little bit, in regards to water usage and storage space.
Yes.
Because while I understand the plants, they don't need as much to grow, however, in the process, how much water do you plan on using? Because I know that there's a great deal in processing those waste materials.
Sure. So the waste stream that comes out of the digesters, we could either make it into compost and then sell it on the wholesale market like Miragro, but we can also retain it in its liquid form and feed it back into the Nopal growth. So they themselves serve as their fertilizer, and, you know, in addition to the manure and the sewage sludge that we're getting. So the water is going to come from that path. The plants themselves, the reason why they're very attractive is they don't use a lot of water, so.
Did that address your question?
I think Mr. Billingsley was going to chime in just a little bit.
Absolutely. Well, there's a, there's a number of items to discuss there. Not only is the Nopal cactus a very low-use crop as compared to the other crops that are currently being grown in Florence, but we have the opportunity, since it's going to be colocated with our south wastewater treatment plant, to de-water in the same way that we de-water right now with our byproduct, which would be utilized as not a byproduct, but a fuel product. And similarly, his byproduct could be de-watered in the same way. One of the other things that can be explored is a couple of different secondary users. One of them he spoke about, which is CO2, and the second one would be somebody who would desire to utilize the dry waste product out of this waste stream for other methods, and we're working on that as well. But it's one of those neat things where there's a whole lot of synergy. The other thing he didn't mention is that treated effluent can be used as the water source as well for both the farming operation and the process, which is something that we produce quite a bit of every year.
And then to answer your question about storage, what's nice about Nopal is you harvest as you need it. Other crops where it's seasonal, you just have to harvest it once a year and then store it, we have the flexibility of throttling based upon demand, so.
Are there any other questions from council at this time? Councilmember Wall?
I was just wondering if your company has any other installations similar to this that have successfully performed the same operations?
Right. All of our third-party partners have done numerous projects in this space. So we have a bench, and depending on the design of the digesters, which design we go with depends on our feedstock. And so when we have this conversation and identify the source, then we can proceed. But all of our vendors have built numerous, and there's the case studies, if you want.
Yeah, that slide, that, all those charts, one of the things you could decipher from that is the UK produces a lot of biogas, but Germany by itself leads the pack. They produce seven gigawatt-hours of electricity per year from their wastewater treatment plants through this process. So this is a well-tested, well-done, plug-and-play type of technology. So it'll allow us to produce energy. Those sources could be used as electricity, as a gas product, or the gas could be cleaned, basically, and used as a fuel for, you know, powering your fleet.
Gentlemen. Gentlemen, one of the things that I brought up at the last meeting, if you want to touch on it, is also the job training component associated with the plant. Yeah, so there's going to be opportunities to create jobs here, but as we expand this model to other municipalities, we can utilize the workforce that we've developed for those projects. And this biogas project alone can, or doesn't end with just meeting the energy needs, it's creating other benefits in relation to job and training. Going back to our partners, the town has worked with Patterson Enterprise and RPA in the past. in the past. Harold here is Phil Patterson. He came out to be here tonight. But we are going to utilize Patterson Enterprise and RPA for doing the build. So the town should have some confidence that they're not new to the process here.
Are there any other questions from council?
Yes. A question about the plantation. Where will that be and how much land will it take to be a plantation to grow this product?
I'll do my best. We're not sure, is the best answer. We're in contact with the local landowner to see, actually, a couple of different local landowners, to see if they're interested in partnering with the project. But it depends on the feedstock, what this feedstock is, how much of it is available. One of the things that he's showing up on this particular slide is how much can be, what are the yields based on different types of feedstock? From my research, it's typically some type of waste, which is either sludge waste from a sewage treatment plant, or animal waste that is then mixed with a crop of some type to generate the energy. So it, clearly, if we're going to have a larger plant than what we can provide from our sludge base, it's going to depend on what those feedstocks would be and how much can be provided. And then you determine Nopal or other feedstocks, what's required. So at this point, we're early enough, I don't believe, Vin has an idea of how many acres would be required, because it depends on the other inputs.
Right.
But we have lots of farmland in Florence.
Councilmember Larson?
I just want to say how optimistic I am about the opportunities. Like you said, for us to look at this as the big picture, for us to have partnerships with FUSD, as well as for us to look at the investors and other opportunities around town. So I just want to say I'm very optimistic for the future program.
Councilmember Geline?
I was just wondering if there are any negative emissions involved as far as air pollution or ground pollution to your plant there?
So from the waste stream, there's going to be sulfur and so forth, but, you know, the sewage sludge would be, the amount of that is the same as what, you know, the current feed stream, the current waste stream has. We have the means to, let's say if we were to purify the biogas into biomethane grade, which is 95% or above, we would be pulling a lot of the waste out, and so it won't be introduced back into the environment. Whereas right now, it's just outgassed.
So I'm going to do my best to try and explain what my research reveals, which is the two smelliest things that we have, and obviously you're smelling sulfur dioxide and methane, at our current wastewater facility are our headworks and our biodigester, our sludge digester. With this process, when the plant's up and running, we no longer will have the sludge digester, which is the big tank that contains all the sludge that's open right now. That feedstock would be fed into their process, which is a contained process within a tank. Similarly, they don't want things to escape from their process as it occurs, because that's their product. The stinky stuff that's generated as part of the digestion is their product that they're going to sell. So they don't want that to escape to the environment. I guess the last thing would be, they're going to have to get permitted through EPA and ADEQ. There'll be a dust permit that'll be associated with it, there'll be an air permit that's, would be associated with this, as well as ADEQ permits and inspections. So they will be heavily regulated in terms of the waste products that would be generated from the process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Looks like that is all for questions or comments at this time. Thank you for coming out, all of your presentation. Is there anything that he did not cover that any of you gentlemen would like to cover?
Sound, noise.
Excellent.
That was addressed. And the typical noise level, you know, they're measured in decibels. And the process is actually very, very quiet. The highest combined heat and power generation aspect, which would be enclosed, is under 80 decibels. And we put a little chart up here. A tractor idling produces 80 decibels. So to put it in, and that's right there. So as you, when you look at the effects of sound over distance, you know, each hundred feet or each thousand feet gets a little bit lower. And, you know, here on the bottom right chart, if a measured level at the site is 76 decibels, about 2,000 feet away from there is 19 decibels, which is lower than crickets and distant frogs.
700, 700 meters.
700 meters, 2,000 feet. Yep, sorry. Just trying to convert. I grew up in North Dakota, so we had nometric and all that stuff. The aspect of the sound, though, is very low, the smell's very contained. And the only other thing I wanted to add was that we're very grateful for the mayor and the council's time today. We look forward to doing some very exciting things with the town of Florence and the county of Penau.
Thank you. Did you have anything else, Councilmember Geline? Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation. Item seven is our consent. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda, unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is authorization into an intergovernmental agreement for provisions of services with the Penau County Recorder for Elections and Voter Registration Services. Item B is approval of the fourth amended and restated membership agreement with the Arizona Municipal Retention Pool and authorize its execution by town manager. Item C is approval of accepting the Register of Demands ending January 31, 2018, in the amount of $2,095,386.10. Is there any item that anybody would like pulled from the consent agenda at this time? With that, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign. Item 8A is new business. This is the introduction of the 2018 election process. Lisa Garcia.
Mayor, members of councils, I'm very excited to give you our first update on the 2018 election process. So as you may be aware already, the town of Florence will have a primary election on August 28, 2018. If all seats are not filled at that time, we will move on to a runoff election, which will be November 6, 2018, as part of the general election. This election will once again be a consolidated election, which means it will be a ground election. But those who have registered to vote on the permanent early ballots will continue to do so. And anyone voting on the permanent early ballot will receive their ballot about approximately August 1. So what is going to be on the town of Florence 2018 election ballot? We have three seats that are up. Right off, if we look right over here, we have councilmember Anderson, councilmember Geline, and Vice Mayor Woolridge that will be up for election this year. As well as town will be in the next presentation presenting to you on Prop 422, that is a permanent base adjustment. I want to remind you that in 2016, the town did adopt a home rule option, and a permanent base adjustment does not affect the next four years. So candidate information. In order to be a qualified candidate, you must be 18 years of age, you must reside in the town of Florence city limits for one year, and be a qualified elector at the time of filing. Benefits of being a town council member. I'm sure each one of you would tell me something different than this list, but I just put together this list really quickly to be able to show the public how great it can be to be a council member. Florence council members do have a voice in all policy decisions of the town of Florence. They do receive $450 per month of each month served. They get to be, have training from the League of Arizona Cities and Towns and other areas in local government, as well as they can attend our local gym for free. You don't do that? How to run for office. As of March 6, the clerk's office will have a candidate packet available. All, if you're interested in running for the town council, alls you need to do is stop by the office and we'll be happy to provide you with a packet. Those packets, a candidate needs to file for office between April 30 and May 30, 2018. That filing would include a nomination petition that includes an affidavit of qualifications, a petition where they went out and obtained signatures from 112 to 224 people, and a financial disclosure statement. You'll notice campaign finance has changed a little bit this year. We're not talking about it at the beginning of the process like we used to. It is now, it's now to where the candidate, if they choose to file a political committee statement of organization, they can do so at the time that they either collect or expend a total of, in any combination, $1,100. But when asking questions about campaign finance, I like to remind the council that town staff, including the town attorney, cannot give legal advice regarding these matters. They're very complicated, and we will remind you to contact your own legal advisors. Voter information. When we talk about elections, I always like to go over the voter information, because our town each and every year changes from where our qualified registered voters are. So as of February 5, 2018, the town of Florence had 5,657 active voters. We also had 467 inactive voters. That just means that maybe they didn't vote in the last election, or one of their mails that were sent from voter registration was returned. You can, they can very easily become an active voter by voting in the next election. So I've listed here precincts 23, 24, and 27 with a breakdown of where you see our registered voters, as well as, it's always, the town of Florence used to be a vote-by-mail community before we consolidated and started being on the consolidated ballot in the fall. And so it's interesting to see how many people are still going towards the permanent early ballots that come by mail. And 68% of our voters are choosing to vote by mail. That means everything about the election changes, the time that we give our voter information out, everything has to happen a little bit earlier. The laws for election signs and other materials for candidates are not keeping up with this timeframe. They still go by the 30 days from the date of the primary election, so everybody needs to keep that in mind, and that is included in our packet that people can come and pick up. Last date of registered vote is July 30 for the primary election, for the general, October 8. So these numbers that I'm showing here, they are a moving target. They're going to continue to grow until the deadlines. This is how our precincts look, just by being able to look at it, by placing the number on the button. This is where our registered voters are. And you'll also see that I went with the traditional precincts, which are the county precincts, but some of these areas are carved out and have county voters in those precincts because we have shared polling sites. The numbers that are included only are the town of Florence registered voters, so I don't want anybody to be confused by that. We, town staff, will hold an orientation, probably one of the nonprofits will hold a forum. As we get that information, we will notify all the candidates who file, as well as the council and the citizens. So with that, that concludes my presentation on our election, our first update. Does anyone have any questions?
Don't see any questions, but I do see an amazing presentation, so that is a job well done, Ms. Lisa.
Thank you.
Yep.
I like that PowerPoint background, by the way. All right, item B is our discussion on the permanent base adjustment being added to the 2018 primary election ballot. This would be known as Resolution Number 1657-18, which is a resolution of the town of Florence, Penau County, Arizona, proposing a permanent adjustment to the 1979, 1980 base expenditure limitation of the town of Florence. Lisa and Joe.
So Joe and I are going to talk about a permanent base adjustment. Before I do, I want to just say that all of the items that are in your background tonight, those are just drafts. And you'll notice as we proceed with our presentation that we presented that the dollar amount and the data based on the most conservative approach that the town of Florence can take. And again, the language for the ballot measure is draft, the dollar amount is draft. So permanent base adjustment. It is not a tax increase or a decrease. It is merely the town of Florence asking the voters to allow for us to create local control by being transparent. And when we do this, we also have a lot of community involvement. Town of Florence, as we go through the budget process, we have public hearings. As we went through the strategic plan process, we developed a committee of our citizens to be able to come in and talk to us about what their needs were and how they felt priorities should be, and they championed that process through. So we tie both our budget process and our strategic planning to future of what the town of Florence is going to do. So we just want to remind everybody, not only are we conservative, but we're also including the public in our processes. So state imposed expenditure limitation. All municipalities have the power to change their state-imposed expenditure limitation through voter approval. 85% of Arizona municipalities have changed their limit through either voting for the home rule process or the permanent base adjustment. And 27% have voted for permanent base adjustment, and every year that number continues to increase. As council is aware, because you're very well-educated on the home rule process, home rule is an election that happens every four years, and our last home rule was improved in 2016. Permanent base adjustment is an election that happens once, and then the council still retains the right to going back to the voters at the time that there is a need for that base amount to be adjusted again. So just because it says permanent base adjustment, no one should be fearful that we are required to live within those means forever. We're just required to live within the means until the voters grant us further base adjustment. Does that make sense? Yes. Home rule is flexible, because after you adopt the home rule process, it goes side by side with your budgeting process. So each year when we adopt our budget, one of the first things we do is adopt a resolution that states what our expenditure limitation will be for that year. Permanent base adjustment includes the amount over the base adjustment above the state limitation. This is the base amount that is adjusted from 1979, 1980, and then the population factor and the inflation factors are multiplied by that base adjustment, and then exemptions are added. Florence's history. Florence, we lost our home rule in 2014. And then we had to go out and we had to learn a whole new process. It was called a override election, or a special one-time election that is required by state law to happen in May. And we had to go forward to the citizens and ask for them to approve this on two consecutive And because they did approve it, the town of Florence was authorized to retain local control for 35 consecutive years. But what did we learn in losing the home rule? Is that we were required to go in and look at our expenditures and do side-by-side comparisons of budget. What budget would be approved in the effect? What, what budget would be approved in the fact that we lost the one-time special override versus what budget would be authorized if we retained the local control and allowed to expend the revenues that we were collecting? This took a lot of time, a lot of council's time, a lot of staff time, and for that two years, we remained focused not only on delivering a effective budget for whatever was adopted by our citizens, because you have to remember, this election was mid-May, when the budgets are adopted in June. It gives you no time to react to what you've just, your, your, your voters have just adopted. It forces you to act prior to, to know what you're going to do and present the proper budget immediately after the adoption. And so it was very, 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 took up a lot of our town staff time, and we were really focused, that was our priority for that two years. It wasn't building Florence, it wasn't moving economic development in Florence, it wasn't capital projects in Florence. It was how, how do we get through this time? And that's where our energy and our focus was. And so that's why when we looked at the permanent base adjustment and why would it be a good idea to present this to the voters at this time? It's because we want to make sure that the council, town staff, our town manager can continue to look to the future, knowing that they have the financial capabilities of spending the monies that we currently collect in order to achieve what we need to in the future. And just to go over, the override was approved by 75%, and the home rule was approved by So as we've discussed, as soon as we lost our home rule, we did change up the way that we operated a little bit. We got a new manager who came in and started doing the budget target before council and explaining how we were looking at revenues and how we were looking at expenditures differently, and coming before the council to make sure that we hit every one of our targets. And we have continued with that same philosophy into the current budget years to make sure that we are operating with revenues equaling expenditures. Proposition 422. This proposition does not raise additional monies, rather it enables the town to spend what revenue it collects. The budgeting, the, but the normal budgeting process remains consistent and will continue to apply. Oh, I want to go back, I want to show you. For those of you who don't know, if you look at the pictures in the slide presentation, this picture right here, this is our very first police department. And where the tree is, there's like a little carport, and that was our very first fire station. The, the fire engine used to just go back right into that carport, and this building was about 800 to 900 square feet, and everybody used this building. It was also the first town hall. And so as we grew, our fire department went over to a bay within the public works area, and a workstation in this part of the building was created for the fire department. Police department got their own building, and fire department got station number one. Since those buildings were built, we did go back in and add an evidence storage building for the police department and fire depart, fire station number two out in the Anthem area. I always think it's cute to look back and say, well, they're making us do 1979, 1980 base adjustment. What did we look like in 1979, 1980? And what we look like is we look like we could operate out of an 800 square foot building and not have very, very much operations, right? So proposition, oh, this is where I'm turning it over to Joe, who is the man on the beam that balances revenues and expenditures.
Looks like I have a very large head. It's very circular sphere, as my kindergarten student would say. Okay. Counsel, well, it was really important for us to continue the message that the citizens have already heard. We're not sharing a new message, we're just sharing a proposal for something a little different. So a vote yes for this Proposition 422 allows the town to adjust its base limit. Continue to provide balanced budget for town services, plan for expanded services and facilities as revenues become available. A vote no means the town will still has, still has two more years on our existing home rule approval, home rule option. The town would go back to the voters in 2020 in order to seek an additional four years of home rule or attempt another permanent base adjustment. So let's talk a little bit about the election calendar that we'd be considering. So March 5th, that's today, that's in the top left corner, we're doing a work session. Based upon the comments and direction we received from the council, we may continue with this calendar. March 19th, an adoption of a resolution that sets the permanent base adjustment call for an election. April 1st, submitted to the Auditor General's office, required information includes summary and detailed analysis. The reason we have to do that is they are the governing board for these types of events. They need to make sure, we need to make sure that they're comfortable with the documentation we're providing. Lisa has inferred, and we're going to infer further in this presentation, that resources for the town and town staff, time and their personalities cannot be used to advocate for or against this proposition. Our responsibility is to provide facts and information. And so that's part of what the Attorney General will look into. You'll see the other dates we have, April 20th is when we receive comments back, May 30th is when the deadline to receive arguments for and against the permanent base adjustment, and then, and on August 1st, conclude pamphlets, distribute, distribution, excuse me, first day of early voting begins, the election would be on August 28th. And if Proposition 422 were approved, it would impact the budget for fiscal year 1920. This is the ballot language. Let's talk a little bit about the ballot language. This is not final. This is a draft for consideration. A vote yes has a specific language written up there, and emphasizing again, this is not a tax increase or decrease. A vote no will have, shall have the effect of not allowing the town of Florence to permanently adjust its base limit. And again, this is not a tax increase or decrease. Now, let's talk about the awesome town services that we're providing. I think that might be Dan Cisco there. It is Dan Cisco, and he is using some, I think it's a jumping jack as he's hammering down asphalt. Is it a jumping jack?
No.
Oh.
It's a fire, it can't help vibrating, but.
Nice. Wow, close. All right. Then we have the pool. These are the services. Each year, the town balances its revenues with expenditures for services. In the event the town collects revenues above the state imposed expenditure limitation, the town simply would not be able to spend that money on services to the citizens. This is the law. Regardless of home rule or permanent base adjustment, if we receive more revenue than the expenditure limitation allows, we cannot use it. So it's important for us to foreshadow or look in the future as to what we anticipate we might receive in revenue and set a base adjustment that considers what may happen in the future. So here are a variety of the services that we're providing. I will mention that finance is not mentioned, but we're under, we're an underlying entity providing services throughout the, out the area. Okay. That's me, jumping out of the money, kind of like the Trojan horse, we're coming out. Okay, so this increase saw, the dollar amount to the question to be presented to the voters must be written to reflect the value of dollars as of 1980. The amount to be presented to the voters does not include inflation, however, the inflationary factor since 1980 would allow the town to expend more today. I want to provide you an example. So in 1979 and 80, the permanent, permanent, the, the base at that point was 714,110. Since then, the inflation and the expenditure factors have been added to it. So here's the example. If the citizens are asked to increase the base adjustment by a million dollars, multiply the new base number by the population factor, the inflation factor, and add it to the allowable exclusions would equal 47,54,602 expenditure limited, limit, excuse me. This is how we're calculating that. Look down here at this section, the 1979-80 base limit. The 1979-80 base limit is 100, 714,110. What we would be asking the citizens to do is adjust that by a million dollars in that example. Then you add in the population factor that is modified every year by the state. Then you add in and multiply it by the inflation factor that is calculated by the state and estimated by the state. Then you would have your projected state imposed expenditure limitation of 43 million dollars, and then you add in your estimated exclusions. That brings us up to that 47 million dollar number I just mentioned. What might you ask are the estimated exclusions? There are specific things that do not fall within the base. They include debt payments. So if we have a large amount of debt payments, they're not, they don't go under the exclusion because that's the way the law has been written. That's one example. Okay. Again, we want to emphasize that increasing the base rate does not increase revenues, expenditures, or taxes. Has no impact. It just allows the town of Florence to utilize the revenue that comes in and to spend with a balanced budget according to the revenue we've received. Every year, we are required to have a balanced budget. And every year, we would present a balanced budget regardless of the decision that is made by the voters. What, what staff is proposing is a very conservative proposal of an increase to the base by 451,500. You might say, Joe, that's a very random number. It is a very random number, but let me tell you about why we are presenting this number. It equals the same amount that was approved by voters in 2016 election. It's physically, fiscally conservative, and it's a responsive, and it's a, it's a responsive, responsible budgeting method. Let me show you why we're using that number. This slide shows you one of the, some of the information that was on the pamphlet from Proposition 411. Proposition 411 was presented to the voters in 2016, and the voters approved it in 2016. You'll notice that in their estimates, down here in the bottom, is the number of total anticipated expenditures for fiscal year 1920. The number is 37,56,211. Let's go to this next one. This is the slide where I incorporated in, over here in this base adjustment area, 451,500. I spent about 20 minutes trying to get that number to be the right number so that my total number here, 37,013,936, was very much in line with the number right here. If the council directed, I could be more specific and we could get down to 56,200. Okay, you're shaking your head no, good. So that's what, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to help the, the citizens recognize, this is something you've already approved. This is something you are already comfortable with, with a 70% voting. This is something we're proposing to you for your consideration. Now, the reason I have this number highlighted in red is I had to make some assumptions as to what we would anticipate in the future. I held the base limit the same, the population factor changes every year, the inflation factor changes every year, but you'll notice that I held the number constant in fiscal year 2022 and 2023. The reason I held it constant is I don't know what that number's going to be in the future, so I just made the assumption it's going to be consistent. I also held my expenditure exclusions at 4.4 million. I don't know what they will be in the future, but I wanted to have that piece be consistent. So for the next 18 years, utilizing this information, that means our expenditure limitation in 18 years would be 40, excuse me, 20 years from now, would be 45,207,107. One of the ways that I tried to calculate whether this is a reasonable number is I looked at our expenditure limitation that was, that we used for fiscal year 1670. And I took that number and I added 2% to that number every year for the next 20 years with a reasonable assumption of 20%, a 2% growth over the next 20 years. And that number is below the 45 million. So I, I have confidence, and Lisa and I have confidence, that this is a very conservative approach that allows the voters to see where we're going and how we're getting there. I'm now going to turn the time over to Lisa.
I would just like to add one thing. Regardless of what number is selected to be put into the election material, you have to remember that that number will give us our amount, our cap amount, but we're still only going to expend the revenues that are collected because our base doesn't mean that we can expend more money than we currently have. So permanent base adjustment. The ballot measure will allow the town of Florence to spend the revenue it collects, to maintain and enhance the level of services it provides. Adoption will not increase or decrease taxes. The proposition does not raise or collect any additional monies, rather it enables us to spend what revenue we already collect. Normal budgeting process continues. This includes public hearings for citizens to provide input and participate, and the town will continue with a balanced budget for services we provide. Exemptions are very important to ensure that the town remains under the expenditure limitations, and any community who goes over the expenditure limitation does face penalties. Election activities. You know the slide was coming. Whenever we talk about elections, whenever we talk about propositions, we talk about what is allowed for the municipality to, to do in presenting its message on the proposition. And a municipality shall not spend or use its resources for the purpose of influencing the outcome of an election. So what is allowed? The town of Florence is allowed to present educational material. We are allowed to respond to questions about the ballot measure. We're value, we're, we're allowed to investigate the impact of all ballot measures, and we are allowed to prepare and distribute election materials as required by the statutes. Elected officials are different than town staff, of course, and elected officials may speak out individually. And elected officials may also use their official title, title on materials that promote the proposition, or as long as it is paid for by the elected official and not the town of Florence. And Joe and I are very happy to do a roadshow. We're very happy to invite the members of council who would like to be present at those roadshows to engage with us, and we are hoping that we're going to put out word to the street that anyone who would like to hear us speak on the permanent base adjustment, if the council does support and recommend approval of that presentation or that proposition, that we, we would like to go and speak as many places as we possibly can. I would like to turn over any time for the town manager to speak on the item.
I think everything's been covered very well.
With that, Joe and I would be happy to entertain any questions. Joe will handle the financial piece, I will handle the election piece.
I noticed on that chart, I think it was the second to the last one that had, had the, well, from this year or next year, 2019 to 37. Are those population numbers correct? I mean, I thought there was like, are we not counting the prisoners, or?
That's a great question, Councilman. That number is actually not just the population. What the state does is they have a population factor. They don't base it solely upon the number of people. They take the population. Let me look at my chart, just a second.
Well, I would, I was just thinking, I thought, last I knew, I thought we were a little over 10,000 or right at 10,000, I mean, not counting the inmates.
So this is how they calculate it. For example, in 2019, 2020, according to the Office of EOE, I don't remember what the EOE is, but it's a state organization, and they told me the number I need to use for 1920 is 27,355. They take that population and divide it by your population as of 1978, which was 3,175. That's why we have the factor of 8.6156.
Okay, yeah, it's going back to that 1980 thing.
Back to 1980.
Okay, all right, that makes sense now.
And that, and that's why they focus on, it's the base, it's the beginning for population and for dollars.
Understood, thank you.
And just a reminder that this election, we are currently in the second year of our home rule process, so this election will allow us to go out, talk to the voters, and allow them to understand what a permanent base adjustment is. If it fails, we will continue with home rule, and we will continue to support the home rule process. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. Thank you, Joe, that was excellent.
I have questions. Hey, you can't, you can't, can't sit down yet. Bill, Bill gets to talk, we all get to talk. Uh, I think one of the things that you should, uh, put in your packet is, what does that home rule election cost us?
We'd be happy to add that information.
And, uh, the other thing is, uh, what is the home rule, uh, limitation versus the revenue that we get? You know, that was a big problem when we talked about home rule, that we were collecting so much more money that we couldn't spend.
Yeah.
And I know the voters, uh, that was very important to the voters.
So, what you're asking us to do is, if we were on the state imposed expenditure limitation to set that amount, and then show how much additional money beyond the state imposed expenditure limitation that we expend on services for our citizens.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
To, to that point, in 2016, seventeen, our state imposed limitation was a little over seventeen million, and, um, removing the exclusions, we spent twenty-one million dollars. And so, we collected more than twenty-one million dollars, but we spent twenty-one. So, the state imposed expenditure limitation was four, four million dollars less than what we actually spent.
Right. That's a good number to know.
Thank you so much, council. Joe and I will be back at the next meeting with a presentation asking for your approval. Um, does anyone have any comments on whether they like the conservative approach, or whether they feel we should put the number to a, a dollar value that would be more easily translated to the voters, like fund five hundred thousand and re, resell it, re, reconsolidate it with numbers, or you want us sticking to the ultra-conservative approach?
I think the ultra-conservative approach is the best approach.
All right, then that's what staff will do. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Mr. Billingsley with the manager report, please.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm going to be very brief tonight because I want to turn some time over to Ben, uh, to discuss an important legislative issue. First item that I have tonight, well, I guess first I need to say, we will get Joe out in the field and show him the difference between a plate compactor and a jumping jack, uh, but I was very impressed that he knew what a jumping jack was. Last week, uh, on March first, our police chief, uh, got an opportunity to go, uh, up to Phoenix and attend a meeting with the National FBI Director, Christopher Ray, Christopher Ray, and, uh, it was only an invitation for the chiefs of, of police around Arizona, and he got an opportunity to speak to current issues facing law enforcement, uh, in Arizona, and specifically in, in Florence. So, I thought that that was really neat, that he got that opportunity, showed me the picture, and, uh, hopefully, uh, it's going to result in some further assistance to law enforcement in Penal County, uh, from the FBI. So, uh, thank you for representing us so well, Chief. Secondarily, I was informed, informed today that Mr. Joseph Jarvis has been awarded the GFOAZ scholarship to attend the GFOA conference this year. So, congratulations, Joe. And, uh, lastly, I found out last week that I have been awarded, uh, a scholarship to attend, uh, the, the National Flood Play Managers Conference, which is being, uh, held at the Sherrod and, uh, in Phoenix downtown. So, uh, once again, uh, another, uh, opportunity, one of the things that we had in the strategic plan was to have more involvement, uh, in state and national organizations. We're doing our best, and, and, uh, I think even more importantly, we're doing that, uh, through applying for, for, uh, grants and, and grant opportunities to be able to, to make those, uh, make those conferences. With that, I will turn it over to Ben to talk about Senate Bill 1392 and House Bill 2479.
Thanks, Brent, members of council. I've got just actually three bills I wanted to, to go over real quickly. The first, I gave you all a, a sheet that's, the League of Cities has produced, League of Cities and Towns, talking about perhaps the most dangerous bill that's popped up for us in this legislative session. That's House Bill 2479. It's actually passed out of the House, it's in the Senate right now. It passed by a margin of thirty-nine to nineteen, so in the House, it was very favorably voted out. Uh, we as the league and, and members of the cities and towns have, have lobbied, uh, to get some amendments to that, and haven't been as successful as we'd like so far. Basically, what the bill would do was, would be remove the transaction privilege tax on digital goods, meaning if you are subscribing to Netflix or Office 365 products, there would be no more sales tax on those items, and that would create a direct hit to cities, towns, as well as the state shared revenue. Uh, we estimate that it'd be about a seventy-seven thousand dollar direct hit to the town of Florence by removing that, that element, and that's not even to mention the hit on state shared revenues and, and county revenues. So, if you think of our recently approved propositions, 416 and 417, or the Penal RTA, the Regional Transit Authority, we would be getting less money into that transportation fund to fund those important projects, uh, because the amount of tax that we would be able to collect would be diminished. And so, we've talked with, uh, our, our constituency at the legislature, and, and would certainly invite all of you and, and those in the public, as, as you run across particularly Senator Pratt right now, as it's in the Senate, uh, to make sure that your concerns are voiced on this bill. It's very dangerous in terms of, of the potential impact to us and our revenues and our ability to, to continue with the projects that we have. Um, another bill, House Bill 2579, is about statewide licensing for video services. It's effectively the, the Cox Communication Bill of this session, and would authorize the state to be the one that, that basically handles franchise agreements or license agreements for Cox. Uh, our agreement currently expires in August of 2020, and so, instead of us going to negotiate with Cox again, that would be done through the state, and they would kind of mandate the terms for us. Uh, we wouldn't have much control over our right-of-way and the repairs that are required to make in the right-of-way if Cox made cuts in our streets, or, just again, a dangerous bill, and we're working with them and, and hope to, to slow the process. Right now, it's, it's in, uh, two committees in the Senate, so that's always a good sign when you see a bill go into two committees. It means it's going to take longer to get through the process into the, the full Senate, and so, we're hopeful on that one, we can continue to slow it down. And then finally, House Bill 2333, which is, uh, a home-based business bill, basically would preempt our zoning code and say, any home-based business that is deemed to have no impact, uh, to its, to its neighbors, would not be required to have a business license, and effect, effectively would not be required to follow zoning laws. And so, on that one, again, passed out of the House with a vote of thirty-six to twenty. Um, and we have had some suggestions as a League of Cities and Towns that have been incorporated into that bill, but still, it just hasn't been able to, uh, to be fixed to our liking. And so, we're still making sure that our, our zoning code can be effective in our community, and make sure that your neighbors don't have, uh, dangerous things that could impact your property. I think one of the interesting things about that bill is that HOAs could still regulate businesses, but cities and towns would no longer be able to regulate those home-based businesses. And so, uh, just something to, to keep your eye on those three bills again, House Bill 2479, and 2579, and 2333, and if you have any questions, happy to answer those.
Any questions for Ben?
I don't have a question, but I just want to make a statement to our audience that, uh, we really need to keep an eye on our legislature these days because they've been taking money away from the, the counties and the towns and the cities on a, for the last three sessions. Every year, they keep, taking money away from HERF, our road money. They, they take away our rules on our zoning and, and ordinances that, uh, do not help the towns. All they're doing is benefiting the legislature, and they sit up there and preach that they don't like Congress telling the states what to do, yet they have, the last few years, have been telling the towns and the cities in no uncertain terms how we should conduct our, our day-to-day business, and limiting us, and taking away funds that were originally set up for certain projects, and the state is just stealing that money away from us. And, and people need to let their representatives know that, that we don't appreciate it. I don't think most people would, anyway. It's sure not helping the cities and towns. That's all I have to say on it.
Thank you, Bill, I agree. It always amazes me, the bills that the legislatures come up with.
They're bizarre.
Or cease to amaze me.
It's bizarre, I don't know what.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Ben. You have department reports in your packets. Are there any questions for any department heads? Guess they got off the hook tonight. Questions for department heads?
Okay, call to the council for current events, oh, call to the public, one more call to the public. Does anybody in the public have anything to say at this time? Excellent closing call to the public. Call to the council for current events only. Councilmember Larson?
I don't have anything tonight.
Councilmember Wall?
Um, I just wanted to mention that I recently received the, uh, construction forecast for Wel, from Wells Fargo, something they do every year, and the forecast indicated that there is an extremely high level of optimism among the, uh, principles in the construction industry for the entire United States, and it's a, it's a level they have not seen in almost twenty years. So, I think that bodes well for us, as well as our county and our state. Uh, there were some concerns, uh, listed, if, if a construction entity had a concern. Uh, there were five of them that they ranked in order, and the number one concern, uh, throughout the companies surveyed was finding and paying for skilled labor, and I think this is something that's been identified, uh, throughout our area as a concern. Uh, the other concerns were rising healthcare costs, tax reform and legislation. Uh, they wonder if they're at the top of the market as far as construction is concerned, and they feel that there is an uncertain regulatory environment, which, uh, I think we all can understand. Uh, that's, that report is available on the Wells Fargo website if anyone is interested. The other thing is that I recently made a suggestion to the League of, of Arizona Cities and Towns to hold a panel discussion at the upcoming August conference on the subject of public-private partnerships, and I made that suggestion with Innovation Pavilion in mind, but also perhaps the Biogas, uh, project, and I suggested that our town manager, as well as officials from Florence Unified and, uh, Penal County be involved in that discussion. Last but not least, I really enjoyed the tour of the Horizon Health Facility. I had no idea how huge that hospital is, and in what wonderful condition it still is, and all of the, um, improvements that have been made in order for them to open their observation unit, hopefully, uh, by mid-year. So, uh, that was a, a wonderful experience.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
I have nothing tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Delene?
Yes, I also attended the tour at, at the New Horizons, uh, mental health facility, and it was wonderful, but also, um, they're having a job fair tomorrow, I believe, from eleven, was it? I think it's the seventh.
No, I think they said the sixth.
Said the sixth?
Yes, March sixth, but I don't remember the time, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's right. Anyway, they're, they're hiring, I think they said approximately forty people, so it'd be a good idea, if anyone's interested, to make sure that they get down there and fill out an application, because they do want to hire as many local people as they can.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Well, I'd just like to remind everybody that the, uh, they're having their anniversary, I think it's the fourth or fifth, fifth year, fifth year anniversary at the, uh, Model Airplane Field, Bond Field, it's out across from, right across the street from the rodeo grounds. Uh, Saturday morning, it opens at ten, and they're going to be dedicating their, uh, new car racetrack out there at one o'clock. Uh, but they're, it's, it's called, uh, they'll be doing demonstrations with the, uh, remote controlled planes. It's called Warbirds Over Florence. They do it every year, and it's, it's pretty neat. It's three dollars a carload, and, uh, they have food and refreshments and stuff out there available, and, uh, they actually have real jets. I mean, some of those planes are pretty sophisticated. They've got real jet engines and, uh, retractable landing gear and every, I mean, it's, it's pretty amazing, but it's, it, everybody would be interested, or interested in getting into that hobby. It should be beautiful weather, about eighty degrees, so, um, I hope people show up for it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Will Rich?
Just for a point of reference for the Horizon behavioral, behavioral health, sooner it is located at the old hospital on Adamsville Road, so be sure if you're looking for a job or know someone looking for a job, that you go over tomorrow, March sixth, they're having a job fair. Eleven to seven, I understand, is the time for the job fair.
Awesome, thank you. I want to, um, thank Chief Hughes and Chief Strayer, they came out for Arizona I Love to Read Week, Dr. Seuss, so we got some great pictures of them reading as well, and Mr. Billingsley, he also made it out for I Love to Read Week, you're right over here at Florence K8, so thank you for coming out and reading. It was a great day, and, um, the kids really enjoy it in the community. We also have, um, another job fair, speaking of, you know, employment in our area. Uh, Florence Unified School District is looking to hire educators, bus drivers, paraprofessionals. Their job fair is going to be March tenth, so for additional information of location and time, just check their website. There's a lot of exciting things that are happening in the town of Florence, so we have a lot to look forward to, a lot of, um, a lot of things that are on the near horizon. We have an executive session tonight that is pretty lengthy, so we are going to go ahead and adjourn at this time, and then we will come out and adjourn from executive session. So, at this time, we need a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries.